Seven items or less, I'll say. So I'll go over that briefly and then there's one item related to the budget that I'd like to talk, discuss with the council before we try to turn it back over to the mayor. So tonight, we will have a Norfolk healthcare consortium update. We have Richard Keatley along with Sabrina Jordan-Hogg that will give you a presentation. Many times, we talk about some of the budget drivers being debt service, retirement, and healthcare, and this gives us an opportunity with their outside expert to talk a little bit about healthcare today and what we'll see in the future. We also have Park New with us, who is the Director of Parking, to discuss some of the parking initiatives that are occurring now as well as in the future. And then, as a follow-up to the last time that we met, we actually have George Home with who will give you a little overview of two ordinances that you will have before you on the 25th. One is dealing with signs and one is auto-establishment standards, so he'll give you an overview of those. Also, next week, I think it's in your Dropbox today, we'll have the Director of Emergency Preparedness give you an update on our emergency operation plan, and that's Jim Reddick. I don't think in the past that we've actually provided an overview, but it's just something that you voted on. So next week, we'd really like to go a bit over it. I think it's an exceptional plan, so to give you an opportunity this week because it's in your Dropbox to go over it prior to next week's vote. And then, in the closed session, we have a real estate man, and I do believe there's one man dealing with appointments. So, Mayor, before I turn it back over to you, earlier Joe provides you with two pieces of paper, two calendars. One is a current calendar that the council approved for April and May, and then there's a second sheet of paper which is proposed. As you can see in the current calendar, in order to get all of the council meetings in place during the calendar year, to get to that magical number to meet the count, which will change because of the change in, basically, the General Assembly changes July 1, but we had four consecutive meetings in April that were set. And what I am asking, is it in the proposed calendar that you have before you, that what's going on with the General Assembly and when the special session won't come, they won't come back into session until the end of March? I'd like to have as much information in front of me as possible before we present a budget to you. So the ask is that we change the calendar in April and instead of the 15th being a work session, but if we could do the budget presentation on the 22nd, and then, if necessary, the council could have a work session only on the 29th?
It's different.
And then, the budget would actually be, if you switch to the back page, it would be very similar to in the past where you would have a second work session on the 13th and a third work session with the final vote on the 20th. So that is what I'm asking tonight in order to provide us with a bit more information before we present a budget to you.
I will have to say I'm not going to be here on April 29th, but I'm happy to. I mean, I already have the proposed budget a week ahead, so I don't know that that means that you should change your schedule.
Marcus, I think that's fine. The General Assembly will not have its budget finished in a timely fashion like we would typically get, so if you, this is really the manager asking for one more week in light of a delayed budget from the, from the General Assembly so we can, you know, have more up-to-date information. And so, one week, and what we'll do is then just have the work session where we can ask him questions about the budget on the last Tuesday. That seems to make sense.
I can call in my question.
Sure. Or he can meet with you individually, actually.
Put Joe Lasker.
Huh?
Put Joe Lasker.
Yeah, that'd be me. As long as you can go meet the ocean in the back.
I think, I know Andy's running late, obviously. He may make the council meeting, the formal session at 7:00. We'll see. Paul is not feeling well, so he's not here. You don't need to be spreading any germs around him either.
Can I just ask quickly about the budget hearings then would begin? I know those are typically...
May 7.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in, nevermind.
May 7.
And we'll just have the one issue?
Yes.
So Paul did phone in one request, Marcus, is that, is the Dix Park Recreation Center closing? Do you know anything about that?
I know there's an issue with funding from the Housing Authority, and the way that it was funded and passed, I'm not sure it can be funded the same way. James Rogers had mentioned something to me about that, and we'll follow up.
Well, I mean, I would want to follow up right away. We would want to keep that center open, so we need a timetable for what the Housing Authority's talking about. You know, if we have to take some action, I think, you know, we probably won't be willing to. All right, Barkley?
I don't have it.
Dr. Whibley? No? Okay. Mrs. Green, it's already to you.
Yeah, at the mayor's luncheon today for the Negro Congress, when they gave us this thing, this brochure from the lottery, and I noticed that Norfolk is $28 million that we, you know, spent on the lottery here in the city, and nobody comes near to, do we get, how do they divide that up? Do we get the largest percent of the lottery money in this area since we're playing the lottery more here? I want to know before I find my education.
Well, the 28, was it 28 million?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that 28 million was already coming to us. They just put lottery funds on it. It's my understanding, it's not extra funding, it's just...
They get, we get this whole 28 million?
We were getting that before the lottery even happened. They just now say that it comes out of lottery.
I think it's a great question, Avita. The question is, should we get back the amount that we put in? And Tommy said they just labeled it something else.
Yeah, they had a different form a little, some years back.
It's really been hard to understand.
Right.
So...
And it's earmarked for certain things, too. I think the school district can only use it for, they can't use it for salaries for teachers or something. It's got to go to technology, or it has a lockbox.
That's a great, that's something this governor might be willing to do.
We might warn our legislators, look at that, next session, next year. That's it.
I'm good.
You're good?
No.
Whoa.
Whoa. Whoa. Marcus's staff is doing such a great job handling all of our issues.
It's not good.
I'm trying to think if I have anything. But I don't, I did, but I, I'll get to it later. Okay.
Good evening. I'm not giving the healthcare presentation. Our healthcare advisors will, but I'm going to introduce them. We have three major budget drivers in our general fund budget, which is healthcare, debt service, and retirement. Now, as a council, you've met with the retirement board and you've met with the actuaries. You've also met with the financial advisors on debt service, but you've, I don't think we've ever brought our healthcare advisors to you. So we've brought them here this time, and we, they came on board with us in 2011, and they helped negotiate some rates, but what, most importantly, they helped us transition us from a fully insured healthcare model to a self-insured model, which we call the city-administered model. So our primary person that we deal with is Richard Keatley, and what they are also doing for the next couple of years with us is helping strategize with us, with a long-term strategy for healthcare as the Healthcare Act takes place and all of the rules are changing on us. They've been invaluable with the feedback that they've given us. So, you go.
Sabrina? Welcome. Richard, nice tie.
Oh, I wore this especially for y'all.
We got that.
I actually bought this at an auction, and I said I have to have this because I'm going to bid on the, can I change the slides with this?
Yes.
I'm going to bid on winning your business as a, as a benefit consulting firm, and I needed to wear my lucky tie, so I'm glad you noticed. Thank you. As Sabrina said, I'm Richard Keatley. I lead the local office for Mercer. For those of you that aren't familiar with Mercer, we're a professional services firm that really does these four things in the top right corner of the slide. We work with firms on their talent, their human capital, on strategies around managing that, around managing the health and vitality of their employees, and designing strategies to manage the costs of the benefits that they provide to them, around retirement planning and administration, and also around investments. So we're in about 45 countries, about 60 offices domestically. As I mentioned, I lead the local office for Mercer and work very closely with the folks here at the city, schools, and redevelopment, Housing Authority. Okay. Okay. It's on, oh, I'm sorry, it's not on. Beautiful. Thank you. There we go. Sabrina asked me to come and talk about six questions and said I had 20 minutes to do it in, and I've got about 24 slides, so I'm going to have to move quickly through them. Feel free to stop me along the way. If there's something in particular you want me to focus on in greater detail, but I'll try to move through the things that I think are very easy to answer as quickly as possible, unless you'd slow me down. First of all, Sabrina mentioned that we moved from being fully insured in, in the prior years to being self-insured. Was that a good idea? And I think you'll see that the answer to that question is yes, and I suspect that it will continue to be yes in the coming years. The other question was, how will the Affordable Care Act's shared responsibility provisions impact the city and the schools? And that is very difficult to answer in two or three slides, but I'm going to try to focus on that and to also to talk a little bit about some of the other elements of health reform that I do think will impact us more than the shared responsibility provisions. I was asked to contrast the difference that employees pay in cost of the city versus those of the schools versus other Virginia governments, and we have some data to share with you there from our annual healthcare survey. Your particular plan, your plan offers coverage to active employees and also offers coverage to retirees, and I was asked to provide some information about the difference in costs between the active plan participants and those of the retirees, particularly the pre-65 retirees that are covered on your health plan, and then some recommendations really from a high level of what we're anticipating for the future to help manage your plan going forward and maintain your costs. First of all, it's probably important to answer a quick question. What is the Norfolk Consortium? Well, it's essentially, it is a purchasing collective created by the city, the schools, and redevelopment Housing Authority, and that group has called itself the Norfolk Consortium and has purchased benefits collectively for well over 20 years. The enrollment, you can see, there's about 9,700 employees and pre-65 retirees enrolled today, representing about 17,000 total employees, dependent spouses, and dependent children. About, it's about split evenly between the city and schools when you look at the total enrollment, but a few are a little bit higher enrollment at the school system for employees than it is for the, for the city. So was it a good idea to self-insure the medical program? I think it's pretty easy to say yes to that. Number one, why do employers self-insure? Well, it's, it's what large employers do. You know, I mentioned that you have about 9,700 employees covered, about 17,000 total members covered. Large employers typically self-insure their benefit plan to the tune of about 93% cover, insure their programs on a self-funded basis. Essentially, you're, you're buying administrative services from your health plan vendor and then funding the claims as they emerge. This significantly improves your flexibility as an organization to design programs, to mitigate costs, take advantage of different vendors, to get the best, for the least, the best product and service for the least cost. In addition, employers wouldn't do this if it was not something where they could manage that risk. For an employee population that large, the claim risk is very predictable based on 9,700 employees, and that part of the claim risk that is unpredictable, that's the catastrophic claims, very high-cost claims, that can be re-insured through something called stop-loss insurance, which the city purchased for 2014 as part of that transition. Another very good reason to, to be self-insured, you avoid right off the top about 4% in cost, broken between state premium tax that's charged to fully insured plans and the new Affordable Care Act insurer fees that are being charged to fully insured plans beginning in 2014, and those insurer fees grow in subsequent years as the insurance industry pays these fees, they pass them through to their fully insured clients. So that cuts about 4% in cost right off the top. It also eliminates any insurer risk or profit charges that are part of the, part of the pricing, and it takes out about 6% to 8% in cost typically by being self-insured. Sabrina asked us to re-forecast the 2014 costs. Originally, we, we did a forecast of 2014 costs back in the summer, and then we've updated that information with claims that Optima provided through September of 2013. We recently updated that just a month or so ago, and from that information, we determined that your 2014 total costs that would be incurred in 2014 would be about $86.7 million. At the same time, we asked Optima for fully insured premiums for the plan year, their rates were going to increase by 11%, and that equated to about $93 million, about a $6.2 million cost avoidance in 2014, and that's probably a pretty key phrase to use. It's cost avoidance. This healthcare expenses continue to grow at a very rapid pace, certainly higher than the general rate of inflation, but removing that cost lowers certainly your base and allows you to buy some time as you figure out other strategies to mitigate costs going The Affordable Care Act, it's hard to talk about it in just a couple of slides. It is very complex, but what we have to face in 2015 and beyond are a number of things. Employer plans have to have a minimum plan design, they have to be considered affordable, you have to offer it to full-time employees that they define as those that work more than 30 hours a week, you have to make sure that you're covering the right dependence, but then there will also be an element that begins in 2018 called the Cadillac Tax or the Excise Tax that will apply a 40% excise tax to plans that cost above a certain threshold. That's the element of health reform that keeps most CEOs and CFOs up at night. That's the one that they will attempt to avoid at all costs. There's additional reporting and disclosure requirements that create administrative complexity for those in the, in the HR area and also for your health plan. We pretty much have the plan design issues licked. Your, your benefit program already meets the minimum requirements, it's already considered affordable for any participating employee that might choose to enroll in it, so you do not have to really worry about any shared responsibility penalties unless the council decides to do away with the health plan, which I would not expect that you to do. But the bigger issue is going to be around this 2018 element, and there's still some elements to be addressed in that. Specifically, full-time employees, the law says you have to offer coverage to those that work 30 or more hours a week. That becomes complex to identify who is a full-time employee because if you have a variable hour person, individual working different hours in different weeks, you have to measure them and make sure that you're offering it to the right employees. The law says you have to offer coverage to dependent children, but it says you do not have to offer coverage to dependent spouses. Not that you might want to drop coverage for spouses, but that is something that you have the option to do. The law says the coverage has to be affordable, has to cost less than 9.5% of the household income of the individual, the part that you're charging the employees to contribute to it. And the level that you set employee contributions today already is far below that level from a, from a safe harbor perspective. And the plan has to cover minimum value. It says the, the benefits have to cover 60% actuarial value, which basically means that on average, the plan covers 60% of the expenses that an employee might face, and your plans cover 80% to 85% of those costs today.
On the affordability piece?
Yes.
Are you saying that the plan that we offer now is already less than the 9.5% of the employee's average household?
It's already, I'll show you a couple of slides down that will get, they'll paint a couple of these pictures, a couple of these numbers for you, give you a little more reference, but yes, that is correct. The, the plan options that you offer today, the city, the schools, and redevelopment Housing Authority, already offer options that are far below the amount that would trigger a shared responsibility penalty. And real quickly, the shared responsibility elements of health reform really apply to large employers, and they're asking employers, or they're requiring of employers, that they offer coverage to all their full-time, substantially all their full-time employees and dependent children, or face a $2,000 penalty. And that penalty is indexed, it gets higher each year. If they offer coverage, they can avoid that $2,000 penalty by, that would normally be charged against all of their full-time employees if they offer coverage and it meets that minimum value and it meets the minimum affordability test. And if it doesn't, employees could go out to the public exchange and potentially purchase subsidized health insurance through the public exchange. Here again, that's not an issue that you have. The one issue might be in identifying all of the variable hour employees and ensuring that in 2015 that you're offering to 70% of them, and in 2016 and thereafter, 95% of them, to make sure you're offering to all of those that work 30 hours a week or more. That's a more complicated test. So I don't see an issue here for you at this point in time. However, the 2018 excise tax, that's a 40% tax on the value of any benefits that individuals have that are above a certain threshold, and that threshold is set at $10,200 for employee-only coverage and $27,500 for, for coverage other than self-only, for family and, and the other tiers. The two items that would equate to that or would accumulate to that today are your fully, are your full premium costs, but also any contributions individuals are making to flexible spending accounts, and they can set aside right now up to $2,500 on a pre-tax basis to help pay their medical expenses. Those two costs together will at some point in time, if not in 2018, exceed those thresholds. So that is an area that we will need to continue to manage the plan costs lower so that you don't have to face these excise taxes going forward.
Can you explain that as if maybe I weren't fifth grader?
I'll try.
Because I'm not really sure I get that.
Essentially, what the health reform law has said is, we have a minimum floor of what your benefits have to look like, what, what they need to cover, how much they need to cover, how much they cost. We're also going to put a ceiling. We don't want them to be so rich, and if they're beyond that ceiling, we're going to tax you on it, and they call it the Cadillac Tax. And I think that the average person thought that that meant that this is some fat cat plan for, you know, the CEO and that sort of thing of an organization, but it's not. Where they have set the, the cap in cost is low enough that most employer plans will hit that cap, because it doesn't only make, it is not only made up by the premiums of the health plan, but also other elements, particularly when folks contribute to a flexible spending account to pay their out-of-pocket expenses with pre-tax dollars. Those dollars accumulate to that cap as well, and because the cap is indexed at CPI plus 1%, and healthcare costs go up about double that, it's not a matter of if you'll hit it, it's a matter of when. So essentially, what that will mean is that employers in large, at large, across the country, will be dialing back the benefit richness, and along with it, they'll dial back the cost of those benefits to stay under that cap to avoid that penalty. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions on that before I move on? So I don't know how many minutes I'm into it, Sabrina, so give me, okay, thank you. What share of employers, of the employee premium does the city employees pay versus other Norfolk Public Schools employees versus governments? We took a look at this, and you'll see here that to the far right in the columns, there are two plans that the city and the schools largely are enrolled in. The plans are the same between the city, the schools, and redevelopment Housing Authority. The city, the schools happens to have an extra plan, but largely, the enrollment is in these two plans, the plus plan and the value plan, and you can see that city employees pay a little bit more for that, those plans, certainly for employee-only, employee and children, and family than the Norfolk Public Schools employees. So over time, the plan has been to bring those two contribution amounts together so that all employees in the Norfolk Consortium, whether they be redevelopment Housing Authority, Norfolk Public Schools, or city employees, pay the same amount for the same plans. We compared those costs to data that comes from our annual survey. We conduct an annual survey each year that goes out and is responded to by about 2,800 organizations. There were 10 city governments that we selected from Virginia that respondents, and we compared those side by side to the contributions for the city and the schools for the two plans, to those for single coverage at the top here and family coverage at the bottom. The, what you can see here is there, you can't tell which respondent is, is which, we're required to blind those responses, but you can see here that the contributions that an employee makes at the city or the schools in, for the most part, falls below that of the other benchmark organizations that we looked at. In other words, your plans cost your employees typically less than those other organizations. It was included in that was City of Richmond, Commonwealth of Virginia, Virginia Beach City and Public Schools, County of Warren, et cetera, et cetera.
Can I ask you, in the peer group that you picked out, do the city employees and the school system employees typically pay the same thing?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. We picked, I know in Virginia Beach it does because Virginia Beach City and Schools is one program, but you can see here, like Stafford County, that was just for the public schools, or Loudon County, I think, was for the county government. So only where there was a combination, I believe City of Richmond has blended their programs as well, that they're purchasing collectively as well, but I couldn't say for, for all of them. I don't think City of Portsmouth does. So, I'm sorry?
No, that's not, sorry.
So the other question, what's the difference in, in cost, and when I mean cost, claim cost, between the active participants and the pre-65 retirees? This past summer, we did some analysis looking back over four years of data to identify the difference in plan costs in each of those years, and you can see here that over a four-year period, the pre-65 retirees incur claims about 1.65 times higher than those of your active employees. That's because they're typically older, you know, as we, as we age, we, you know, use more healthcare services, but the pre-65 retirees are an expensive proposition for all governments, not just, not just an offer. So governments have looked to try to manage these costs going forward. Historically, the state of Virginia, or the, the laws in Virginia require governments to offer coverage to pre-65 retirees. You have to offer the same plans to those retirees that you offer to active employees, but you don't necessarily have to charge the same amount, and the rates for those plans don't necessarily have to be the same. So what other options might exist for those pre-65 employees as you look at managing these costs? Well, there is the, the new healthcare marketplace. That has created a marketplace of individual products that individuals can enroll in, and if their income level falls at a certain level and they're not eligible for employer coverage elsewhere, that, those, those plans could be far less expensive to them than the plan that you offered them today. I'm going to try to move through these numbers very quickly. To be eligible for subsidized health insurance on the exchange, you have to have lower income, it has to be below four times the poverty level, and your employer has to not offer you coverage. Well, if you're a retiree, then you're not working. You might have coverage offered to your spouse that may make you ineligible for this, but the federal poverty level in 2014 goes along the left-hand side of the page there, and it varies by the number of individuals that are in your family size. The law says folks between 138% of the poverty level and 400% are maybe eligible for a subsidy, so it gives you a sense of those, those numbers there. Individuals in the public exchanges can purchase coverage based on metal colors, bronze, silver, gold, and platinum, and they range in value from 60% through 90%. And as I mentioned before, your plans are in the 80% to 85% range, so the, the plans that are available here in Hampton Roads are only available up to the gold level. There are lots of silvers, there's lots of bronzes, and a few golds available in Hampton And this is kind of where the rubber meets the road, to give you some perspective. If someone is eligible for a premium subsidy in the exchange, they're, what they pay for coverage is, is based on a function of their salary or their household income. So depending upon what level of income, where they fall to the So depending upon what level of income, where they fall to the poverty level, will drive what they pay in monthly dollars to be enrolled in coverage. So someone at 138% of the poverty level can purchase a silver plan, the second lowest-cost silver plan, for $41, and the rest is subsidized by the government. And whatever that cost is that the government is subsidizing, that can be applied to a gold plan or a bronze plan to buy the, to increase the cost or reduce the cost to the, the individual that's purchasing it. There is another element of health reform that for folks that, whose income is below 200% of the poverty level, if they incur a lot of expenses, they have a lot of medical claims, their plan can be enriched as high as 94%. When this is a 70% plan, this is a silver plan. So not only is it inexpensive, but it can also cover a lot more than your plan does today. In order to be affordable, and this is a key little number down here in the bottom, in the bottom chart, in order to be considered affordable and not have to face any shared responsibility provision, you have to offer coverage that costs less than $92.38 beginning in 2015. And you already have plans that are far, far below that in cost. So you, you don't have to worry with this. Individuals that are retirees, on the other hand, may be able to go to the exchange, depending upon their income and family situation, and buy coverage on the public exchange and pay far less than they do today to be enrolled in it through the city. That helps you in a number of ways. It lowers some of your costs, reduce some of the risk in your plan, potentially reduces some of the GASB liability that you have to project on your books. So wrapping up, some recommendations for the future. When we got together and talked about a strategy, these were the key elements that we discussed in the strategy. Not all the key changes we intended to make, but some of the key focuses we wanted to make. We wanted to simplify things. We wanted to consolidate to a single plan year, and the things here marked with a red X, we've already done. We wanted to move from fully insured to self-insured, which we've already done. Over time, we want to progressively change the plan design to engage individuals in their, their care, so that they're more in tune with what things cost, so that they're more engaged in taking care of themselves and, and achieving better health outcomes. So moving from a fixed co-pay design to co-insurance, possibly to consumer-directed plans with accounts and so forth at some point in time. We wanted to expand the use of the tools that are available to help people understand quality and cost differences among, among their options. We wanted to develop a culture of health here in Norfolk, so that individuals begin to take more responsibility for maintaining their own health by introducing meaningful incentives to reward healthy outcomes and behaviors and potentially, potentially punish those that are unhealthy. We want to increase the effort of, of achieving those incentives over time. So if someone achieves the incentive today, and, oh, that was easy, we want to make it a little harder next year so that they continue to progress in their, progression towards a better, healthy environment. We want to begin to force some disruption in the plans so that people will break the inertia of just doing the same old thing, to begin to compare their offerings rather than simply saying, you know, it's the same plan I had last year, it only went up $5, I'll just stay with it again this year. So they can make better decisions about what works for them and their family. We also want to provide, potentially offer meaningful, other meaningful plan options that are suited to your population. Want to aggressively manage those costs that you can control, post-retirement medical being one of them. We did a dependent eligibility verification project that I assume a number of you in the room probably had to respond to a year or so ago, to try to remove those individuals that were not eligible for your health plan and costing you money from the plan. That has been completed. That saved close to $900,000, is projected. We wanted to transition the way that you contribute to healthcare so that you're contributing an equal amount to each plan and let the employee pay the differential. That's going to take a little time to move towards. And then ultimately, as part of the request for proposal process, achieve the best pricing for goods and services through the administrators that you purchase administration services from, and the stop-loss insurance that you purchase to manage the risk within your plan. I believe that's it, and our disclosure and caveats there at this point. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if I move too quickly. I know I'm well beyond my 20 minutes.
Marcus, you got any questions?
No.
Have there been any conversations about, with the regional push on working with other cities to grow? Because I know when you add more employees, it's actually better, more buying power. So have we had those conversations with Virginia Beach, Portsmouth?
Councilman, what, what we did, I guess it was a little over a year ago, in the shared services project with Virginia Beach, Norfolk, and Chesapeake, where Councilman Win was a, a part of that discussion. One of the, the items was, because we all used the same advisor, could we move to this combined healthcare? One of the, the big issues was that Virginia Beach was self-insured. We were not. Now we are self-insured. I'm not sure if Chesapeake is.
They're not currently.
Right. But we were all trying to move towards self-insurance, insurance, but then after that, could we get a bigger bang three buck, if you will, if we all combine? One of the things, I'll start with this, is that it's interesting enough to have a, a school system and the city employees trying to get all of the same amount. But when you take that and you multiply that with, add two more localities to it with very different plans, the concept is that, I hate to use the word winners and losers, but there would have to be some changes, some give and take to make it work. But it's something that's on the forefront.
Yeah, so when the school system merged in, that part of human resources at the school system got cut. So the, the school district hopefully saves money off of that. I know some employees moved over to the city to assist, but not as many as were running that. And so, you know, if you were to join with Virginia Beach or whoever, then that same concept, you know, if you merge it together, you don't need, there's somebody doing a job, maybe that the work do a little bit more.
Sure.
But you might not need five people doing what four, three people can do. So you end up saving money on that in the long run as well, I assume.
Yes.
So you might have winners and losers, but maybe you can apply those savings to a pay raise for employees or some, you know, so that, then everybody wins, you know, that's...
One comment I'll add to that, when, when you look at your total plan costs, the lion's share, 90% or more, are coming from the claims that are incurred by your, the population that's covered. You could save some by sharing the, you know, consolidating the administration, no doubt. But the challenge becomes when you cross city lines and different political subdivision lines, if there's any risk sharing across them, and there's a winner, like the city pays less than it should have for its population, or this Virginia Beach pays more than it should have, let's say, that becomes very challenging to work out the right arrangement on.
Okay. All right, Marcus, thank you. Thank you, that was good.
Don't worry, this is not a dull, dry, boring parking presentation all based on numbers. I think we put you through enough of that last year, when we talked about the parking fund and its need to become solvent and self-supporting. Still doesn't work. We're having technical difficulties. So our parking system, if you don't know already, it's one of the largest municipally-owned and managed parking systems in the country. Last year about this time, we were projected to have over a $5 million deficit. So we did a comprehensive review of the situation with our financial advisors, and with their direction and their advisement, we went through a series of scenarios where it resulted in us adjusting the parking rates. We implemented financial policies that you passed last summer, I believe. We refunded the parking revenue bonds to general obligation bonds and produced a debt service savings. And we converted to a fully automated garage system. So the parking fund at this point is, is stable, it's solvent, and it is self-supporting. So the exciting part of this is that we have hired a parking director, who we waited for a very long time to find the right person. His name is Barton U., although I think he also goes by Carl, if you look him up in Outlook. But Barton U., he comes to us with a very vast experience of valet parking, event venues, airport, hospitals, higher education. As a matter of fact, we picked him from North Carolina Wilmington recently. And he, he has vision. He's very good at working with the people, and he's got some very good ideas. So without any further delay, Bart?
Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, everybody, and I really do appreciate this. Call me Bart, please. Only two people call me Carl, I know, they get special privileges, but, no, I appreciate the chance. I've been here since July. I've had seven or eight months to really get my feet on the ground here, and in that process, I've, I've been able to talk to a lot of constituents around the city and really get a lot of feedback about the parking program as it's been seen, and really to help us guide on putting together these parking initiatives on where, where we want to take the program and how we want to operate it in the future. So, okay, I'm not doing that, so somebody else is helping with that. Okay. So our first is engagement. Basically, these are already all in process. We are, we've made it a point to get to work directly with economic development and to become involved and actually have a seat at the table when, when development projects are, are involved, particularly in the downtown area, whether it's a new tenant moving to downtown or actually new development. So the parking can be a part of that planning process and ultimately provide the solution that, that the new tenant is looking for. But also to ensure that the parking system as a whole is, is utilized to its optimum, to the best way it can be, in that we want to ensure that we don't overload one parking garage, one that one right next door is at 50% occupancy. So it's really about really good management practices when it comes to the new developments and ensuring that, that new tenants are getting what they, what they want when they come downtown. We're striving and really reaching out to merchants and businesses to ensure that, that parking is not the wall that stands in the way of, of their businesses. One thing I, I'd never like to hear is when somebody says, I'm not coming downtown because I have to pay to park. We're, we're trying to, to break down that barrier in that there, there's different programs and promotions that, that we're already working on right now to work with merchants on validation programs, as I'm going to talk about more here in a moment. But, but also to, to do a little bit of outside-of-the-box thinking in terms of promotions and, and things that we can do to, to make, to make parking engage and part, and be part of the vitality of, of downtown. A big piece of this is the customer education piece. One of the sayings that I've always said is that people don't think about parking until it becomes a problem. So it's really our goal is for people not to have to think about parking. And, and a big piece of that is educating the customers, is how does parking do what it does, but also why? And that's a big piece, is, is educating people on, on why we pay for parking, really. And also the, the, the convenience factor as well. We want to, I'll talk about that more here in a moment, but is introducing new systems that make parking more convenient and moving towards that, that philosophy that people don't have to think about parking. We have a couple pilot programs, or a few pilot programs we're working on, and the Top Deck Program, which was initiated about a year ago, which is a promotion for small businesses to park in the, on the roofs of certain garages at a discount. There's a Stay and Play Program, which we partnered with the DNC last December to extend the parking hours of, of people with daytime parking permits, to encourage them to stay downtown, to, to engage more in the downtown activities, to stay and have dinner, have drinks with friends, or shop, or do whatever. And, and that was successful, and that we would like to do that again here soon, hopefully with the intent of, of making it a permanent solution as well. And finally, we've been, Dr. Wibley's been, been instrumental with the Downtown Norfolk Civic Group on, on exploring options for two, for free parking on some of the streets downtown, and, and we're exploring those options right now, we're looking at some numbers as well. So, so the, a real big piece of this whole, whole part is embracing technology. One thing we have here in Norfolk is a lot of opportunity. The garage automation has already occurred, and that's allowed for certain efficiencies that weren't there before. There is, a, a lot of it is, we've introduced the validation programs, which allows businesses to actually validate based on usage and be invoiced after the fact, rather than pay in advance and guess about how long their guests are staying. So there's been a lot of positive feedback from that. The pay-by-phone service, we're actually putting together an RFP on that right now. That is, will enhance our existing on-street meter system, to where a customer can pull up to a meter and actually pay for parking on their cellphone.
I saw that somewhere, that is really...
Yeah, it's cool, and we're, we're working on that right now. So what we, and the nice thing about that is, is by setting up an account, which takes one or two minutes, I've done it myself, it's very easy, somebody with a regular cellphone or smartphone with an app can, can punch in a meter number and pay for their parking right in their car. And, and to take it a step further, if they're at Starbucks having a coffee, the system will text them and remind them when their parking's about to expire. Or if they have, if they have an option to add time, it'll allow them to add time to their meter right four blocks away from their car, so. But a big piece of this pay-by-phone is the merchant engagement piece. This is going to be a part where it will allow merchants to actually validate parking for people who park on the street. So somebody can part, pay for their parking on their phone, go in and visit a mer, and actually, there's an app which will say which, which merchants participate in the validation program. They can go into one of those stores, and the merchant can give them a code which will actually discount their parking when they enter it, depending on how much that merchant validates. So again, that's more engagement towards, towards the merchants. Another is to introduce smart meters, which are, allow more payment options. Right now, our meters take coins and smart cards, and we all know coins are antiquated, and we don't carry a whole lot around anymore. So just allowing people more payment options with credit cards. And a big piece of the smart meters also is reporting capabilities. Right now, our meters don't tell us anything. We don't know how much we make on a block face, or, or how, how much a meter is utilized throughout a day, other than how many cars are parked there. Do you have back-office software that'll allow us to, to run specific and collect specific data, as much as we'd like, from any meter, about time, revenues, anything? So we can start building projections, which I'll talk about more here in a minute, too.
Are the smart meters pay per usage, or do they still allow to run over? Like at ODU, you have to, you park in a space, you go and you pay, and unless I give you my space as I'm leaving and I've got extra space, you know, time on there, then everyone who comes to that space has to pay.
It's called pay rate.
Yeah, so is it a pay, pay, pay-by-space?
There's ways to implement that with the systems, yes. You know, it does, not all of them come with it, but you can add that as a feature, yes. So basically, when a car drives away, the meter immediately clicks to, to off. So yes, that, that's, that's available as well. Another, what the, the sign right there is wavefinding, improve wavefinding around town, to where particularly for events are sawed on, to where there can be signage placed around that gives real-time information on how many spaces are available. What that does, that reduces congestion and really allows for better, better efficiencies on the streets downtown. And what all this leads to is really, is a data-driven system to where we can begin to really proactively plan based on data that we collect from these technologies, which allow us to make more informed decisions and allows greater flexibility if somebody wants to come and try a new program. We can collect this data very easily and, and start to analyze and see just how we can make it work. Better strategic and long-range planning, financial solvency, in that we can have better revenue projections and, and bill our budgets accordingly, and, and really implement the best practices, and that's the way the industry is going. Technology's come a really long way in the parking industry, even in the past 10 years, and, and we want to be on that wave. So, so that's where we're going to head. So the system itself, we're already working on, on some enhancements, opportunities through, through downtown redevelopment. Like I said, we're working with the development group, and, and we just see a lot of opportunities coming along the way, so we are making sure that we're a part of that. We just had condition assessments done of all of our parking facilities, so we, we were able to put together a multi-year capital improvement plan, which will allow us to be more strategic in our maintenance and, and our budgeting for, for capital improvements, in that we can, we can really gear our programs more towards the preventative maintenance side rather than the repair side, which saves us money in the long term. Upgrading lighting, a part of that assessment was a lighting assessment as well, where we're able to, the lighting technology's come a long way in the recent years, in that parking, or lights in parking garages have actually become so efficient and, and actually much brighter to where... have actually become so efficient and actually much brighter to where they can, we can, they cost a fraction to, to power is what the current lights do. So we're introducing a phase system to where we'll look to upgrade the lighting, too. The return on investment in those is relatively short, and with something with a 10- to 15-year lifespan, there's significant cost savings with those as well, so. And then close coordination with the police and our existing road patrol, where we have dedicated officers who, who patrol our facilities 24/7 for the safety aspect.
Can I add one little thing to that?
Just smell. In the garages?
Yes.
We are...
Because we want them to be inviting, and I know that sometimes they're used as urinals, particularly in the staircases, but when you're an out-of-town person, you're coming in and the impression that you get, I'm, I'm serious, but I know it can be funny, but I know, I think you guys have sprayed them down. I see that happening, but are we doing any, are we more proactive?
Yeah, we're being more proactive. We're actually putting, putting together a better maintenance plan overall, but that includes a better work order system, where we're actually able to, to be more proactive on, on those issues. And we're directly, right now, we're assigning staff to garages who, who are essentially in that garage all day, making sure that it's clean and stays clean.
To piggyback off of what Tommy said, and actually it was a comment of mine, also coordinating with fest events and the Marriott, where when you have large events downtown, when usually they are used for other purposes other than parking, that will probably be something to work with as well. The other thing is, again, coordinating with the special events and coordinating with the Marriott to have a person in the garage at the exit of the event. Because even though we have the automation, it's still very new, and people get stuck and they don't know, and it is just a cluster.
That's actually something we're working on right now. We're tweaking it down a little bit. Some of the feedback I have gotten is that particularly for events, even at the Norval or somewhere like that, there's, there's a large exit, right?
Wherever there's an event close to a parking garage and people are coming and going on that out exit, even in the middle of the day, if it's a luncheon or something, you can easily spend 20 minutes trying to get out of the garage because people don't know how to use that. And the signage on them is not the greatest either. So maybe some larger signs or something like that to, because I got caught one time, and I'm trying to figure out, how do I use this stupid thing? It's not the, the signage is not the greatest in terms of the instruction either, but overall, it's a good system.
Actually, you know, and I appreciate Bart and I have been working together with some groups, and there really are much better ideas than what you're talking about, and that is that it should be free exit when you have these huge events. And so they should be paying when they come in.
That's fine, too.
Then they should go, because this is absolutely a deterrent for, for groups. And even if everybody knows how to use those machines and they're working great, it's still very, very slow. And we need to be thinking out of the box on this. I, I will say Bart was a breath of fresh air. I mean, this, he has been fabulous. He really is coming to us with some, some great ideas, but I really, and you know, Marcus and I talk about this, but I urge you all to remember that even with the fiscal constraints of the Parking Enterprise Fund, we can't be penny-wise and pound foolish. If we are continuing to keep people from coming to our downtown because they are paying for parking, then we're losing money in the taxes for downtown and meals taxes. And we need to be thinking about that maybe meals tax can be paid into the parking fund. But we all know there is huge competition with free parking, and I think we're getting to a point where we need to be quick on trying to make some decisions that are going to help our retail downtown and our restaurants. So Bart's the guy, I think he's taken us a long way, but it's, it's going to be some different ideas. I mean, somebody had proposed, after nine o'clock, make it free. You know, I mean, anybody that's here after nine o'clock is eating or drinking, and so we're getting money from that. Why, why deter them from being here because they're paying for parking? The small amount that we're getting compared to the advantages for our city downtown. So I, I look forward to continuing to work on it.
That's a lot of the feedback I've got, and that's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
On the stay and, was it stay and play, stay in?
Stay and play.
Stay and play. The other aspect to think about there is not just people who are, who are staying to eat dinner, but people who are staying to work.
Right.
I run out of the Waterside Garage at like, I don't know, six o'clock, seven o'clock, whatever time it is, it cuts off because it doesn't, my little swipey doesn't swipe anymore. So if you're working and you have that extended hour, it makes a big difference.
Well, tax season right now, we're going to have a lot of companies on that right now.
Absolutely. It makes a big difference.
It does.
I think one thing that's unfortunate, and again, I think it really is our lack of communicating what we have. If you, and Terry, I agree with you, but you go to Richmond and try to park for an event, and you can forget about it. It is a horrible place to try to get in and out of their downtown to park. And frankly, you go to Virginia Beach and you eat at Town Center, you're paying to park. It's, it's all it is, it's just hidden in your, it's hidden in your, your elevated bill that you're paying. It's just, that's where the cost is hidden. So unfortunately, we don't perhaps let people know that when we compare ourselves to other cities, you're paying to park at the beach, no doubt about it. You go into Dick's, you're paying to park because it's, you would be cheaper going to Janif than going to Dick's and, and purchasing what you want at Sports Authority. That being said, because I think that needs to be understood, you're paying to park when you go to the beach. You're just paying more when you buy your beer. But one thing that I would say is, is that, and it was, I really believe that you really need to look at the, we have a lot of garages downtown, and you really need to look at labeling them. If you're from out of town, and I, just again, going back to Richmond, driving in Richmond and trying to find a garage is, if the, if it's, if the signage is flat on the face of the building, you will drive right past it trying to find a place. Here, if you're from out of town, and especially I hope with the congestion that will ultimately occur between the business that will come with Cordish and the other, and with the hotel, and with the ball field in the summer, once all that gets cranked up downtown. I really think you need to have fairly significant-sized peas that let people know parking is where it is, that you can see it from down the street, and, and if there's some kind of an app that lets somebody know, if I'm coming up to the Waterside Garage, I know you mentioned technology, but there's got to be an app somewhere, and if there's not, then I should invent it, that says Waterside Garage, it's, I know it said it's, they're available, but I've got to pay 10 bucks to park there, where I can park three blocks away at the Plume Street Garage, and I'm going to only pay five bucks. And if, and I don't know if that exists, something tells me something's out there. There are a lot smarter people than I am.
Yeah, they're just on the, on the verge right now.
Okay. Well, that's the other area I would say look at, because again, I think you're going to find, and I, it's great we're having this discussion now, because I do believe, two and three years out from now, downtown, even though we have gridlock now, we haven't seen gridlock until Cordish opens, the hotel opens, the Slover's open, and you have more and more, you have more residents that are coming into downtown. We haven't seen gridlock yet, and we're going to see it. So if anything, having you now and beginning to prepare for this is significant. And we also may want, again, I'm going to digress and go back to the issue of marketing. We, we better begin explaining to people, you can go to Virginia Beach, you're going, you're paying them. And, and as much as people want to contradict that, it's only true. And you may be paying a de minimis amount. People also forget that in downtown, after an hour, a certain hour, you have free street parking within our city, and that includes every loading zone, every 15-minute zone. It's free. So I think that's also forgotten and lost. That's something else you may want to, even though they won't be parking in garages, per se, it is something that residents or tourists need to understand. That's all I have.
Now, I was at MEAC last week, and I didn't hear the complaints. I went about four nights to the tournament about parking. Y'all, you did have signs out that designated the parking places, because I mistook it turned into the underground parking, and when I rode around, I could see other parking places with your green signs. And the traffic was, chief, the traffic was moving smoothly out from the MEAC all flowing through Church Street and Waterside Drive, and all, so that was a, a good event, the traffic in the park, and according, in my opinion.
Well, it's important for us to get it in quickly, too, because you know how that can back up on a street.
Can I follow up on one last thing? And this really, and I apologize, Paul, if I can.
No, you follow up with what Terry said. Terry's correct about it. It should be on the way out, you pay.
Right.
But we really need to talk, and I don't, I haven't turned around to see if the chief is here. But one of the biggest complaints that I hear from, and that's being downtown, is that you have PD that's out there on the street. I know they're contracted PD. They're usually contracted by the builder or the developer who's developing a specific project. But what's really happening is they're not necessarily pushing the traffic through. They're just standing there, and I hate to say it, but that's what's going on. And it may be outside the realm of what we require them to do, but when the light is red and you have an officer in the intersection, the officer needs to take control of the intersection and push the traffic through, or at least control the light from where the light can be controlled. So it's one of the two, and what's happening is the officer's just standing there watching the light, and all he's doing is make sure the intersection is clear, but he's not pushing traffic. I'm going back now. You need to be preparing now, because what's going to happen, as Terry said, in the future, in the near future, could be two years out or less, I really believe it's going to be, and I've been in Chicago, when they're trying to get people out, those cops stand there, and they're pushing you through that red light. They take control of it, they control the intersection, they push them through, and they're at every intersection. We need to begin a discussion on, because right now, they can stand in front of this courthouse, and they're just watching. They may open the intersection, make sure the intersection's open, but they're not pushing traffic through, and that's something that we need to start looking at, that when we do have MEAC, when we do have concerts come in, that you need to push the traffic out of downtown. If you're going to put officers in the intersection, you need to take control of it and push them out, because they're not doing that right now.
Okay, let me wrap up really fast. You know, one thing that, that I think is important for a parking program as well is, is not to, and this is, what we're having here is a great discussion. And basically what it is, I, I've not seen a successful parking program where the, where the parking people stand on a podium and tell people how it's going to work. It's about community engagement. It's about listening to the communities, about working with the community, and that's what we're talking about here right now. Educating people on how the system works, as I say here, it's more than meets the eye. Parking is actually a very complex system, and, and it helps when people understand how it works, not only, and the why it works. And really making our enhancements based on what we're talking about here is community dialogue and input, so. That's all I have. Is there anything else?
What would it take, Marcus, to get, because Terry, you do make a point about downtown, going to other cities with the parking being free, especially Town Center, since they opened up that, I don't know how many parking space, free lot or whatever. What would it take to get Saturdays free on the street for meters? I know we have Sunday, but Saturday meters, or maybe after 12:00 or something? But the weekend, I mean, people want to come down, they want to come down with their families and whatnot, and they have to pay either the garage or the meter parking, you know, maybe two-hour limits on Saturday or something like that.
That's exactly what Bart's working on right now.
Working on right now.
Right.
I think it's important to have a time limit, otherwise people will park there all day and people won't want to park. So we're working on that.
And, and you said, too, we really don't know what we make from meters because it's not electronic.
Yeah, our meters right now are not.
So we have no idea. Okay, okay.
So we want to change it. I think it'll be a good, a lot of good technology.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Bart, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Great.
I've been told to keep this really, really quick, so there's two items that are coming to you from the Planning Commission that are policy changes. Both of them are coming from the Planning Commission unanimously recommended for approval. We just wanted to really quickly give them to you and make sure if you had any questions, I was able to answer them. The first is billboards. I know that a number of you have talked about that. The policy change here is to allow LED digital billboard displays. And so there's three basic changes. The first is to allow the LEDs. The second is to allow height to be measured from the roadway on which, to which the billboards are facing, as opposed to the ground where they're located. So for example, the one on 264 that's sort of down in the hole, it is at its maximum height, but it's hard to see, so it would be able to be raised and have its height measured from the, the surface of 264 as opposed to the ground down by the grab shack. And then the third is to allow conforming billboards to automatically be changed without having to go through a special exception process. So current, you, I think you all know what the current regulations are, where we want to move to. And there are certain streets where new billboards are prohibited. There are many exist, there are some existing ones on those streets, but new ones are prohibited there. So we're...
With the exist, with the existing ones in that location, in those locations now, would they be allowed to switch over to LED?
No. They are non-conforming, and non-conforming signs would be allowed, well, that's, they would, but they'd have to go through the special exception, and it would have to be approved by y'all.
Okay.
The only ones that are proposed to be allowed to be converted to digital by right are existing conforming signs along interstate highways. And there are three of them that are owned by Adams, and we've identified two others that are owned by other people. So the total universe right now that could be converted as a matter of right is five, and they're all, four of them are on, on 64, and one of them is on 264. So the proposed amendments just talked about can convert by right, can increase to the maximum height allowed, can increase to the maximum size allowed, but only to those six can be, can be done by right. All the others would have to come to you through a special exception process. Comes to you 7-0 from the Planning Commission. The next one...
George, can I add? I know you said quick, but I have a question about this.
It's your, your meeting.
Yeah, thanks. That was his meeting. I'm just, I'm just here. I'm trying to figure out why, and some of the veteran council members can explain to me, why there's so much opposition to digital LED boards, even on businesses? When in my book, it's cleaner-looking, it's more, I think it's better for the environment, I would say, overall. I, I don't want them everywhere, but I think that, you know, if I looked at all the billboards that were just on Ocean View Avenue right now, I guarantee you, if I went to the community and asked them if they'd rather see digital billboards there, they would say yes, compared to those that rip off every time a storm comes through, and then you've got paper hanging on them, and they look horrible after a month. Not putting down Adams, but I, I think that that's why they've realized that they, they've got a shift in this market. And Adams, who is, exist in Norfolk as a business, I think we tend, we'll end up making money as a city because they'll get more business from the tax dollars, and we get more from the tax dollars that are collected when they get more business. So I'm, I'm just curious why there's, it seems to be so much opposition to moving in this direction when it seems this is where, you know, it's kind of like the food truck thing, and, I mean, if this is where we're going, why are we limiting this to just interstates? And why aren't we looking at some other areas that maybe this would help clean up the look of, like, military highway? I mean, it's just a corridor of signs, but maybe these billboards would add a little bit more class to it, and maybe there's particular locations in the city. I know this is a start, but I just am bothered by this opposition to it.
I will say that Adams supports this approach, and we worked with them to come up with this approach. They, I believe, and I don't want to speak for them, are interested in investing in those signs that have the biggest bang for the buck for them, and those are the ones that their faces are on the interstate. All of the others could, can easily be done, but it goes through the special exception process, and many, if not most, of the signs in the city are non, existing signs are non-conform... process, and many, if not most, of the signs in the city are non, existing signs are non-conforming for one reason or another. And as you know, when we have non-conformities, we try through the special exception process to get them more nearly conforming if we can as part of that process. So we didn't really want to lose that tool out of the toolbox.
So what you're saying is, the signs that I see on Granby Street, those are non-conforming?
Those are not only non-conforming, they would not be allowed today.
So if they can, they can continue as long as the owner stays current, but if it's changed ownership, then would they, then no longer be able to be there?
No, ma'am. The billboards are-
Ownership, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's, it's only ABC establishments and entertainment establishments in the city where ownership is an issue. Everything else, it runs with the law and not the owner.
Help me find, help me about the billboards that I see on Granby. They're non-conforming. Those can be there forever now?
Yeah, but if they want to change them to the family, they got to get a special exception.
Change to LED.
Unless they get burnt to the ground, right?
Increase their size, their height.
It's like our building.
So as long as, so it doesn't matter if it goes from Adams to somebody else?
Correct.
They can stay. Tommy, to answer your question, and maybe I'm, I'm not as veteran as some of you, but I'm-
You're plenty veteran, don't you?
I'm old, but I'm now as vet. My opposition, very frankly, was with LED signs. Billboards, I oppose all billboards. I mean, I think all of them are ugly, but I would agree-
That they're going to be there.
But I would agree with you, if we're stuck with them-
These are less ugly.
They're less ugly, yes. So, but when we talk about the opposition to LED signs, I thought it was more the, you know, the signs of the churches and the things that we were, I wasn't aware of people being against LED billboards.
What is your opposition to LED signs? I mean, in general, what is your-
You just said they're tacky?
Yeah, aesthetic. But I'll have to agree with you, I think our billboards, which are atrocious, are less atrocious when they're LED, and they are better maintained.
We have an opportunity to partner with the company too, because I know that they have programs where they allow us to put, you know, quick information out if there's a, or Amber Alerts, I think they go up on there now.
Yeah.
Or even Teachers of the Year, you know, and working with the school system and celebrating things that we're doing around the city.
Are they ever perceived as being, especially the ones that are pretty interactive and flipping around, are they ever a safety issue?
Distraction.
A distraction? Has anybody looked at that?
I think any more than this.
That was one that should be-
I think it's one of those age old-
I was just, I was curious.
That's a constant question about are the, do they distract drivers?
That's the personal injury lawyer's bail.
They'll be changing, these will be-
But I do think that, you know, it's difficult to talk about two sides of our mouth, because the city has the equivalent of a billboard on Nauticus that, that changes, that's, you know, this LED, very flash.
Flashing, and scot. Best thing that ever happened.
What's, I'm sorry.
All grand memorial LED, changing the sign.
And so, and so that being said, then if we have one, it's very difficult to turn to these advertising companies and say, you can't put it on Tossig or Norview or anywhere else. So I think that if they come to us, then I think that the consideration has to be pretty liberal, I would assume. When we're in our own business of doing it, it's very difficult to tell somebody else that they can't be.
I don't think anybody's standing there, but-
Yeah, but there is a general consensus, I have a school that needs a banner, what do you, what are the things outside to put the information?
Oh, a marquee.
A marquee, and the principal said that it came up, and they were like, oh no, you're never going to get an electronic marquee in a city in Norfolk, so you just have to deal with that thing you put.
But schools are allowed.
They, I told her, I didn't know-
Schools are exempt under-
Why that would be the case, but-
But that might just be a general-
Yeah.
Okay.
In this proposed amendment, are the churches included of what they need a special exception if they want it, in churches located in neighborhoods and some, because I did have a-
This amendment doesn't deal with that at all. This is outdoor advertising signs, which are things that are off premise, and for the most part, it's what we think of as billboards.
Okay, so the churches would need to come and get a special exception.
We actually have, we have dealt with churches is on some individual cases. You have something that will be coming to you next week that allows institutions, which include churches, to have signage based on the size of the building, but that's, that would not include digital signage, but that's-
Yeah, of course, I had gotten a question from one of my civic leagues about the churches. Thank you.
Auto-related establishments, really, really quickly. Joint meeting with Planning Commission last year, decision was made, we needed to move forward with some modifications to the general plan to address the issue of automobile-related establishments on East Little Creek and Military Highway. The Planning Commission discussed it at length. One of the things I want to make sure is that we don't put rules in play that are so draconian that it freezes in place the bad actors that are out there and increases their value, because it's so much harder to do something that's better. So the proposal is to add some language to the general plan, planned off at 2030, that deals first with new establishments, and then second with existing establishments, and establishes landscaping, buffering, parking for all, and the idea is to try to, over time, bring the older establishments closer and closer to, into line with where we would hope and aspire it to be. So the first thing is to amend the general plan, we're proposing three amendments to the general plan. One to the general land use section, one to the sections that deal with East Little Creek, and to Military Highway, and then lastly, to the implementation sections that, where we are going to, we talk about implementation. Once this is adopted, Planning Commission has already directed staff to begin working on some performance standards that could be adopted into the zoning ordinance that would begin to affect these changes. Again, this came to you with a 7-0 vote recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission.
Okay. A good example, that was the most recent tire store over Black Angels America, and he did the landscaping without the requirement, because when, with, to get the community's support, they had recommended that he do that, and he did it, and he complied, and it's probably the nicest landscaped tire store in Norfolk, you know, I mean, Barclay didn't do the landscaping, but, no, but it's, it's nice.
What a record.
Unfortunately, the nicest landscaped tire store in Norfolk is not a very high bar. I'm going to go look at, see what kind of tanks you have.
That means there are two shrubs.
They should shred tires and use that as the mulch, right? Marcus, yeah, we're going to go in a closed session.
Planting trees. On 21st Street, now that they've taken down all of that property, you know, there is a billboard here, which is now so evident as you drive by, Terry, I don't know if you, it's not a very tall billboard, but it's right there by the little nursery, and I don't know who owns it, but-
No, he doesn't.
Okay, all right, so we know who owns it, okay. Forget I mentioned it, okay, I know what he's talking about, okay, because that's, that's is, that's a sign it's going to distract the view of everything, that's all the stuff that's trying to happen in there, but if it's privately owned, okay. Okay, all right, thanks, then we'll go into closed session, okay?
I'm with the members of council, assemble in closed meeting on March 18, 2014 at 6:35 PM for the clause, for the purposes set out in clauses one and three of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and that is discussion of candidates for according to city boards, commissions, or authorities, and three, discussion of the disposition of publicly held real property in the areas of Harbor Park and Lake Wright, East Thomas Park. Ms. Green?
She just had-
Mr. Furtiger?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.